I would like to call the Wednesday, January 12, 2022, meeting of the Franklin Board of Education to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I think we need to do the roll call first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, I'm acting as clerk today. Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Mrs. Wachowski?
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Here.
Dr. Kahn?
Here.
And I'm here.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
It's all moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number four, Friends of Franklin recognition. Mrs. Sapursky?
Thank you. We would like to, we have our Friends of Franklin Award, which is presented to community members who are making a difference in supporting the mission of our Franklin Public Schools. And tonight we'd like to present that to Mr. Josh Hansen, a Franklin grad, who's now working for RexNord and coordinating helping with our robotics program. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I'm delighted to be here tonight. Josh is a graduate, and he was on our team all four years, in the beginning years of our team. He went to Madison and was part of robotics in the Madison area, came back to the Franklin area, and has been with us, supporting our team ever since. He has also done some work with First Lego League, FLL, out at Countrydale, and helped us to organize an FLL tournament at the high school back in 2019. We hope to do that again once things theoretically get better. But we were very excited when he transitioned to RexNord from Uline, because they are very big sponsors of First Robotics, and that allowed us to get a significant donation from that company.
We are very, very happy to you, and would like to recognize you as official.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number five is community comment. Participants under this agenda item must be residents of the Franklin Public School District or parents, guardians of Franklin Public School District students, and must limit their statements to three minutes, with a maximum of 15 minutes for any and all comment. If the community comment is related to an agenda item, the board may respond to that comment, either at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The board may not discuss a comment or question that does not relate to an agenda item per Board Policy Administrative Rule Number 8300. So we have two people that are speaking, and the first will be Adam Wittenberg.
As you all know, the topic that I continue to go on, I will continue tonight, to start with professionals. If you break a tooth and go in, you're not going to see a gynecologist for your tooth. You're going to go see a dentist, somebody who specializes in that field to fix it. If a mother who goes in with a high-risk pregnancy, she's not going to go see a dentist. She's going to go see probably multiple doctors that specialize in their fields for the baby and the premature delivery. The same thing goes with masks, because masks are PPE, and there are professionals who know this field. That's what they do every day. It's how they make recommendations, it's how they teach people. And going back to environmental engineers, who are pro-mask, when they're worn properly and the proper training is in effect, such as doctors, nurses, janitorial staff, but they've highly recommended the general public not to use masks, because masks can be dangerous, if not more dangerous than what's going on right now, if they're not properly maintained, cared for, and they're not wearing the correct mask. There's three parts to an effective mask. The outside, the inside has the cotton to absorb moisture, and then you have a filter, and then you have another part that helps protect against the viruses and pathogens and everything else that kills it off. Wearing what a lot of these kids are wearing, the cloth mask, throwing them in the washing machine does not sanitize them. It cleans them, gets the dirt, debris, and scum off of them, but without bleach, alcohol, UV lights, they're not getting sanitized. And based on the environmental engineer's recommendations, is not properly wearing the right mask or sanitizing can greatly increase the risk of getting COVID. And the US Attorney, the US Surgeon General also made this recommendation that if masks are not properly, if you don't follow the proper mask hygiene, it can be a lot more, a lot more people can get infected with it with not properly caring for it. Most people still continue to touch their face, touch their mask all day long, take it on and off. All that is contaminating your mask. It is allowing whatever to grow on top of it, because most people don't wear the correct mask. So I think it's time to stop following the Simon Says Politics, and I have yet to see a real debate and studies put out on why our kids should be wearing masks, other than because I said so. So, and that's where I met. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Winkie?
Last month I said I was done speaking, so I have nothing to say, but I do want to share from Kevin Zimmerman, who has the school board right in our neighborhood, Muskego. And today he posted, there's a slight delay on my COVID numbers due to updates, but, so with that being said, I thought it was a nice graph. It compares our school district to Franklin's school district. Now, for you guys don't know, Muskego has grades K-4 through 12th grade, mask optional, let the parents choose, let the kids choose. Muskego Norway has 600 more citizens and around 50 more students than Franklin. Our district, Muskego, is currently showing less cases than Franklin. Both districts have mask optional. I think he doesn't know we're forced to wear them right now. But with that being said, Muskego Norway has 8% less vaccinated rate also over Franklin. Also Franklin requires our masks, kids K-4 through 6th grade. But he posted his graph, and it shows per cases per thousand, we're at 60 cases here in Franklin, they're at 20. These kids have been able to breathe all year long at their own will. Our children in Franklin deserve to breathe, and we need to unmask these kids and let the parents make the choice. I know numbers are surging right now and so forth, but it's time to give the parents back the choice of what they want their kids to be wearing at school. I thank you for your time, but this is our neighbor speaking about us, and our cases are dramatically more than Norway's, Franklin, Muskego Norway's. So I want you guys to think about it, and next time, take your vote, and unmask these poor children. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six is the consent agenda. Does anybody want to remove anything from the consent agenda? If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Aye.
Item number seven, school board announcements. Are there any school board announcements? Item number eight is the school board calendar. The regular Board of Education meeting will be Wednesday, January 26, at the ECC at 6:00 PM. And also a regular Board of Education meeting will be Wednesday, February 9, 2022, at the ECC at 6:00 PM. Item number nine is the district administrative update. Judy Miller is unable to attend the meeting, but has provided this update. In the news, as we headed into the winter break, we were fortunate to have two stories featured on CBS 58. One was about the food item drive that took place at Pleasant View, and the other featured high school senior Abby Martin and her time as a recent co-host of the Holiday Baking Championship Show on the Food Network. You can find these shared on our social media channels. This week is finals at Franklin High School, so staff and students there are wrapping up their first semester work and transitioning to start the second semester next Tuesday. In addition, we started math testing at grades K to 8 this week. With regard to COVID-19, we are continuing to see an increase in COVID-19 cases. We intend to share more information with families in the district newsletter on Friday, and on January 26, the Board of Education will be discussing COVID-19 and the instructional learning plan. That's all I have. Any questions? Moving on then to item number 10, reports, presentations, and other school board business. First item is the communications update. And Mr. Kafka?
Somebody wants to sing while I suck this up? No takers?
Sorry. We can't compete with you.
Right, right. All right. All right, good evening. Good to be with you again. I typically do two updates during the school year on how communications is going for the district. Appreciate this opportunity to kind of do this in a public forum and share our communication efforts in Franklin schools and how those are going. And what I'd like to do tonight is spend some time on these two parts that are up on the screen. First part is updating you on the communications plan, that is, the three-year plan for 2021 through 2024. I brought this to you back in May with some rough draft of the areas of focus and the strategies, and tonight I bring the full plan to you that include the tactics that we'll be focusing on for the next three years. And then part two includes some samples from just communications from this year, and some of our communication channels, and where we push out content, and a few of the analytics that I've shared with you, things like I've shared in the past. So that's my plan, is to go through this update. As we go through the communication plan, there's three areas of focus, and I'll stop after each area and see if you have any questions or any feedback as I share those tactics with you. Can you guys hear me okay? Is it too muffled? Is that okay? Okay, good. That's why I threw the microphone on, so hopefully that would help. Okay, so as I shared last May, just to kind of refresh you on how this works, the communications plan is tied very closely to the coherence plan. And so what I shared with you back in May was I shared the areas of focus and the strategies, brought those to you, got some feedback, and then since then, been working on creating the tactics that would fall under those strategies as we go forward with this plan for the next three years. How we measure how this plan is working is we look at different ways to measure growth, and so these are some examples of where we would pull some statistics, some feedback, some data. The first one is with our staff pulse survey that we do, usually around four times a year, where we get feedback from staff, and so we have some questions on there that relate to some of our communications efforts, so we pull some data from there. Parent and community survey, we're currently working on revamping that a little bit and retooling that, but in the past, we've had some statements on there like this, where we get some feedback from families and communities about how our communication efforts are going, so specific questions, we would pull the responses for that. Analytics is another way that we measure growth, so with using some of the tools that we use to push out digitally through our district newsletters, our building newsletters, social media, we take a look at just how engagement is going through those tools. And then just anecdotal feedback. Various groups will give us feedback, whether it's leaders, staff, family members, community, and so we try to look at that as a way to measure growth and how our communication efforts are going as well. So the first area of focus is the FPS story and all the pieces that go along with helping us to tell our story. And this could be everything from focusing on our mission, our vision, our values, this could be our branding, including our visuals, our logos, our colors, being consistent with those, so that when somebody sees something, whether it's online, whether it's at one of our buildings, they tie it back to being a part of Franklin Public Schools. We use this branding and our key messaging to help tell that story and better solidify us, not only within our community, but within the educational community as a whole. So we have two strategies in this area. The first strategy is to just build consistency in communication using that key messaging. So this plan was in your board packet that I think you received last Friday, so I'll be throwing these pieces up here, but I'll be specifically highlighting some specific areas that I want to just draw your attention to through these tactics. So the first action or tactic in this area is to better define our key messaging tied to our mission, our vision, and values, and being explicit when we do that. So this has to do with everything that we put out, whether it be something in a Friday newsletter, whether it be something on social media, whether it's a principal writing the letter as part of something they send out to their staff or to their buildings. We really try to make those explicit connections back to our mission, our vision, our values, tying it back to stewardship, tying it back to innovation, using our phrasing of better place to learn, better place to work, part of a better community. We really work hard to do that. So in terms of this tactic, all of us are responsible for that. And so at different points, I'll be working with principals, directors, just making sure whenever we're crafting something, that we are specifically tying back to that. And how we measure that would be through a family survey, would be through an employee survey, or possibly statements on a pulse survey, like the examples I gave a little bit ago. The second tactic in this area has to do with correlating consistent messages and putting them together kind of as a communication guide for our staff and our leaders. This is something that I've wanted to work on since I came into this role, because there was no real kind of consistent guide for people to follow in terms of what color schemes should we be using when we do presentations? If I want to put something out on social media, what's the best way to do that? If we have routine drills or alerts that we send to families, or common messages that we send to families, we didn't have good templates for that. We're good at crafting those, but I want to put those together in a communications guide that becomes a piece of something that we hand to a new leader, a new employee that says, this is what we should follow in terms of communications. So my plan with that is to kind of develop that here. Over this year, I've already started pulling pieces when we send some common messages, or example messages. I've been trying to really make a concerted effort to put those together in a guide, so I plan to develop that and then deploy that going into next year, so that leaders have access to it and can pull from it and build on it. So that's currently in the works. The second strategy in this area has to do with building and better defining the Franklin Public Schools' brand. So this first tactic has to do with branding assets, and this ties into the communication guide as well. So when we talk about putting those branding assets somewhere central that people can get at them, a lot of times people will contact me and say, I'm looking for a logo for this. Where do we have that? And there's been no real kind of organized way for people to do that, so I want to make sure that they are using our correct imagery and making sure that they're using the correct color schemes and the correct, if they're doing a signature on their email, things like that, that just help to portray our brand better to our audiences. And then the second tactic in this area has to do with actually creating awareness for the guide and how to use the guide and making that be part of our regular routines. So those two tactics specifically help to just increase the focus on being consistent with our branding. So these are the two strategies in the first area that we plan to work on for the next, I'll say, three years, but really two and a half now, because we're in January. So I'll pause there for any questions on this specific area that you may have or any feedback, while I also take a breath.
I don't see a lot with the community. I mean, when we talk about a, you know, brand, shouldn't you be checking to see, is the community recognizing a brand?
Sure. That'll come through in the third area of focus, which has to do with our external stakeholders, and kind of, I would envision that that would come back through things like family surveys that we would do with our external stakeholders. Yeah?
I'm just wondering if, I know you do a lot every day just to sort of manage the communications that exist as they are. How are you getting the support that you need to be able to be pulling together all of these various user guides and communication guides? Are you confident you'll be able to do that?
Confident to do that, yes, because that's something I think we need, and it's been one that I've, it's been easy to do as a just-in-time measure when we're crafting something that has to go out of a certain school. Oh wait, let's throw that into the guide. So it's kind of building it as we go a little bit.
Okay.
So I'm not as worried about that, and it's been something I've wanted to just put some real focus on and organize better, so I think that will be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, good question. Well, thank you. Okay, moving on to the second area. So the second area of focus focuses on our internal stakeholders and how our internal communications go out to those stakeholders. So this means anyone internal to the organization, including board members, our leaders, our staff, and just how we communicate best within our internal stakeholder group. So the first strategy in this area has to do with increasing the quality and accessibility of one-way, two-way, and passive communication with our staff. So I'm going to pause there for a second, because I think I explained this back in May, but I'll re-explain it now. What that means is, one-way communication is typically when we broadcast something out. We're pushing something out. So an example of that might be our staff newsletter that we put out right now bi-weekly. We're sending that information out one way for staff to receive it. It's informational, it's usually informing them about upcoming events, upcoming something, whether it's Professional Development Day, changes in our school, whatever might be happening. Two-way communication is when we put something out and we want feedback back. So pushing something out, like a staff survey, the pulse surveys I mentioned, once a year we do the employee engagement survey, that's an example of our two-way communication with our internal stakeholders. And then our passive communication has to do with information that is parked somewhere for people to access. So an example of this, which I'll, I forget if it's the first one or not, it is the first one, has to do with parking the information somewhere so that it's passive, it's sitting there, it's a resource, staff can go to it when they need to. So this first tactic has to do with creating, deploying, and maintaining a passive communication system, which we call our employee hub, that allows staff to access information as needed. So this has already actually been created. I created this, and we launched it back in the fall, and it's, think of it like an Intranet. So businesses will have an Intranet where staff can access it with their credentials, and basically there's just pages there by department. So we have a student services section, we have a communications area, we have an area dedicated to the superintendent, we have business services, and so those departments, including HR, continuous improvement, they will put their resources there, so some of their guides that we need to be familiar with as a staff member. So it took a lot to kind of organize that into one place. I wanted to tackle that first before I got into the communications guide, but by having that in one place, that passive communication is then there, and as we've had new hires, part of our process has been, make sure you can sign into the employee hub and access these documents you might need from HR or from business services. So that's been a benefit to us to organize that, and we also have been able to move some of that information that was on our public website that really didn't have anything to do with the public, it was just some of our like internal forms and things like that. It made sense to kind of put it in this place for staff. Our second area, or second tactic, rather, is to increase our consistency of that district and department messaging by utilizing our Franklin Find Staff Newsletter that we push out currently bi-weekly, and continuing to analyze those metrics. So this is one that we started last year. We're finding a benefit to this. When we are analyzing those metrics, we're seeing that of our 900 staff, usually we're in the 700, 750 range for people viewing this, which is good, you're never going to get a full 100%, but it's become a resource that staff has known to look for and expect when we're sharing that information, and so this has been one that we constantly are revising. And the way we gauge that, if it's working, we can obviously just do a survey on that, which we may do, but also through our employee engagement survey, part of the questions in there, one of them was, I receive information that I need to effectively, to do my job effectively. So that relates to, are they receiving the right communication in order to do that? And then the third tactic has to do with reviewing the employee engagement survey. We've used this one now for a few years, and so we want to look at that and see, are we asking the right questions? Do we need task questions? Do we need different questions? Do we need, how can we best use this to get the right feedback from our staff to make changes or to make updates or look at what we're doing? I mentioned in there too, using this in conjunction with rounding. So rounding, as you probably heard, is a technique that some of our leaders do, where they occasionally do kind of an informal check-in with staff as a way to get feedback. That's two-way communication. So how can we best kind of augment that with this employee engagement survey and get that information that can be helpful as well? So we'll be working on this, I'll be working on this with Ms. Damaris through HR, and looking at how we can kind of enhance that over these next three years. Our second strategy has to do with fostering pride through internal communication. So looking at this, you know, we say better place to work, how are we actually kind of attacking that and using that? So the first tactic is doing more with staff recognition. We've already started doing this a little bit. We've been meeting Ms. Damaris, Dr. Mo, and I have been looking at different things we could do to recognize staff in different ways, and we don't mean just bringing back in the past, we had the U-Rock Award. We're trying to figure out, how can we do recognition at different levels, so it's more impactful and more meaningful? So examples of that, that we've kind of been testing the waters with a little bit this year, one is kind of having a way for staff to do shout-outs for each other. So our employee hub, one of the things we built in there and we were using in our staff newsletter was the ability to have a digital wall where staff member could put something out there around Thanksgiving, we said, somebody or something you're grateful for in Franklin, and people were giving a lot of shout-outs on there to people that they worked with and reasons why they were thankful for working with so-and-so. So little things like that that can help with recognition, as well as we mentioned, supervisor to subordinate. We've got one idea we're working on that I don't want to share, because we're in a public forum, and we're going to kind of get that going here in the next few weeks. And then looking at some peer-to-peer, well, the peer-to-peer was kind of the shout-out wall, but looking at what we can do better for recognition overall. And then the second tactic, creating ways to showcase our staff and the staff work in the district. So what does that mean? One way, one little way we're doing this is, right before the holiday break, we put out to our staff, we were asking for testimonials about what it means to work in Franklin Public Schools, and we're collecting those so that, two things, one, we can get some feedback and hear what staff is saying, two, Ms. Damaris can use that in her hiring efforts here in the spring, when she's going out to different job fairs or recruiting staff and saying, this is what staff is actually saying, boots on the ground, about working in Franklin Public Schools. So those are little things that we plan to do, also looking at possible ideas of like a staff spotlight or features, whether it be in our newsletter or the newsletter that we actually put out to the city, or on our website, or social media graphic, that's kind of a staff spotlight, and kind of incorporating more of that for recognition. So those are the ways that we would approach the area of internal stakeholders. I'll pause there if there's any questions or feedback.
Talking, I have a question.
No, go for it.
I'm just wondering back on the previous slide, when you were talking about revamping the employee engagement survey, I'm just wondering if you could tell me a little bit more about what your goals for that are, and if you see this as a way to sort of be a canary in the coal mine to identify any problems that might be happening before they become significant, like how do you see this working?
So I'll let you speak too, but very early stages, we've just been saying, hey, this is something we should attack and look at and burke on. Do you want to add on to that?
Yeah, and I think it's also, you know, those types of surveys need consistent review for the quality of the questions. So we're asking questions, but what are we really getting out from our employees, or what are we learning? And I'm finding that some of them, while good information, they don't actually tell me anything, or tell us anything about how we can actually make a difference for our employees and their experience. So I think it's focusing on things like that, and then maybe digging a little bit deeper into areas that have been identified as, not necessarily concerns, but we've heard some feedback, so applying more in-depth questions around those specific areas to see if it's more of a centralized concern, or if it's a wider spread concern. So really just more, like better quality of information and feedback from our employees, so they also feel like we're receiving the feedback and we're able to do something about it.
Right. That's one thing we've talked about on past surveys, is sometimes surveys have been done in any organization where, okay, I fill out the survey, what's really done with it? So we want to kind of look at that and see what would help the person filling out the survey to fill it out and feel like it's actionable, or that something may happen or a change may occur, not that it's going to be exactly what the person wants filling out the survey, but something that just helps kind of move the organization forward.
What's your goal for when these new questions might be implemented? Can I say on there? I can't remember.
So, sorry, let me go.
Back to you, I think.
Yeah, I was back.
Okay.
Employee engagement survey. So we were going to explore the ideas here during year one, so 21, 22 is year one, kind of develop it during year two, and then evaluate if it's working, or evaluate if it's the one we want to run. It may mean that we do issue it into next year. I don't know if we were talking about doing it for this year, or, I don't think we were for this year.
No, we're going to probably look into next year, just for consistency.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Because we do still want to compare the current employee engagement survey to the data we have from the past employee data we have from the past employee engagement survey, but then kind of look at where we can make some strides.
Is it the same survey for all staff, or are teachers or different sports staff different, or is it the same survey, everybody gets the same one?
It's the same for everyone, um, yes, it is the same survey for everybody.
Yep.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
Chad, back on that same slide.
Yep.
Not that you have to go back to it, but regarding your intranet for your staff.
Yeah.
And I know it's new this year, but that seems like it'd be super valuable for, you know, if I'm just a person working in my classroom and I need a file or, you know, whatever, have you heard, I mean, have you as like district leaders heard, like, oh, I love having the, you know, student services section, I know exactly where to get this form, or HR kind of questions, things like that, have, have you already heard anecdotally that that's helping, or do you feel like you are getting fewer questions because people can go directly to that, or?
Yeah, that's a great question, when it usually comes to me, it's, hey, we have this new employee that can't get in, so like, can you help fix that? So that's usually the feedback I'm getting, is to help get that person in, and then I'm usually getting like, oh, thank you, I found what I needed, I'm getting that kind of feedback, I guess I defer to the department leads on if you're hearing, if it's helping just have the organ, the resources organized into one space.
Yeah, I can say from an HR perspective, we have employees that feel a little bit more independent, like they don't necessarily need to call us for everything, because they know exactly where a form is or the link to log in to a specific software, so they've really appreciated that, and I think also, it also, Chad was kind enough to go around and take everyone's photo, so the pictures of everyone are on the site as well.
Yep.
So for employees that don't frequently come to the district offices, they at least kind of can put a face to a name, and especially if they see them out in the different schools, you know, oh, I'm gonna meet with Laura today, now I actually know what she looks like when she's, you know, coming to meet with me, so I think that's been really helpful too.
Everyone loved that, we set up a glamour shots booth here in the.
The lighting, all was, it was all happening.
Dr. Khan.
So, employee engagement survey.
Yes.
Because it's a process to learn, you know, finding out what data it is and all that stuff, do we also plan to, for example, kind of, as Mr. Dom said, you know, if you're collecting the data, what is, are we, like, at organizations where I work, for example, if there's an engagement survey, you know, you get almost, to be honest, you get so many emails from the CMO, the medical president, hospital, everybody says, even, please fill the survey, this is the deadline, this is that line, this is the, multiple reminders keep happening, which kind of, you know, sometimes is annoying, but you know, it's definitely kind of, you know, keeps reminding you the, hey, you know, kind of, you know, and also the second thing is that, is there a way where, to finding out if, any, because say, volunteer information, you don't have to fill the survey as an employer of any organization, but just to kind of give the feedback to the employees that this year, for example, we collected, you know, 70% of the, of the participants, you know, collected, fulfilled, completed the survey, and this way you ask, for example, you know, of course, some individuals have specific asks which have to be dealt in a personal manner, you know, from one, one tone with the HR, but if there's a specific ask, for example, one, two, three, and this was your ask, one, two, three, and this is what we did, you know, one, two, three, in that way, it feels that, okay, for example, if I'm asking for, for example, I'm just giving it, improve laptop, you know, that was a general ask, you know, you asked for improved, you know, you know, updated laptops, so we kind of, you know, and that's the ask, and what was the solution, either districts is looking at buying this, something like that, so it's a, it becomes a two-way communication, because the employees, you ask, you give them the survey, and then you are able to act on it and give them the answer back, so it becomes, so, is there any plan of things like that?
I would think yes, I would think that we would have, because currently with our pulse surveys, what we end up doing is we collect all the data and then we end up sharing it all with the staff the next month and say, hey, here's what everybody said, and they can see exactly from the pulse surveys as quick check-ins, like this is where staff's feeling, this is what the results were, I like your idea of saying, now do we tie it back to, this is how this data's been taken and used going forward, I would think, I would think yes, that is only good communication, I don't know if you have any thoughts?
Yeah, and the other way that we do that follow-up from the survey results is that our, our staff servers are actually anonymous, so we want them to feel comfortable sharing, you know, their true feelings about their experience working with us, so what we generally do is in those rounding sessions that Chad mentioned, while principals can't specifically, you know, supervisor can't specifically pick out, like, I know that you said this, like, that's not the intention, but they use those as another tool of open communication, just saying, hey, is there anything that I can help you with to do your job better, or is there any resources that you're not getting that you need to be more successful? Or, you know, sometimes we take questions that scored a little bit lower than we had expected them, and we incorporate those in the rounding conversation so that we can get that direct feedback from staff in a more comfortable scenario where they're one-on-one, they have that level of trust with their supervisor to provide that feedback, so.
Any other questions?
I do have one more question.
Yeah, yeah.
On this slide that's actually already up.
Yeah.
With your staff recognition and showcasing staff, and that sounds like in this case it's more internal, are you gonna use any of that externally, and I know we're getting to community in a minute here, but?
I think some of that would be used externally.
Just in terms of like engaging the community, you know, maybe our community becomes more interested in the school if they know, oh, this particular chemistry teacher is really interested in such and such, or this, you know, look what they're doing in this Fayed class, or just some of those kind of staff things in order to build engagement.
Yep, the testimonials are a great example of that, because we plan to use that as part of our hiring process, so that'll be external, as well as, if we can, sometimes it's just collecting the content, like getting the picture of the staff member, and, or if they're doing something and, and collecting that information, and then putting together, if it's a simple graphic that we're putting out on our social media, if it's something we put in a newsletter, that would all be going out as a, as a, as part of those spotlights, as well as I would envision we build something into our current employee hub, where we have some spotlights in there too, just for internal, so, yeah, both, I think, is the answer there. All right, moving along to final area, external stakeholders and communication, so finding ways to engage our external stakeholders, community members, families, businesses, you know, we have our SABR Business Alliance, it's a big part of our relationship within the community, so how can we really leverage that, and how can we make sure that we're communicating well with them in one-way, two-way, passive communication as well, so that's what these strategies and tactics get at, so the first strategy is very similar to the internal stakeholder, except now we're talking about our external stakeholders, is increasing the quality and accessibility of that one-way, two-way, and passive communication, so each of these tactics ties to one of those, this first one ties to the one-way communication, so reviewing, evaluating, and continuing to streamline our information sharing through building-level newsletters and our district newsletters, just making sure that we're reviewing those analytics, we've done a really good job over this last year and a half of finding a system that works for us, looking at the backend of the analytics, again, I'll share some of that with you here in a little bit, and seeing what we can do, how our messages are coming across, one's a good time to reach people, one's not a good time to reach people, we've learned that a little bit as well, so just regularly reviewing that and, and improving those communications. In terms of two-way, reviewing, evaluating, implementing an updated family and community survey to gather feedback from families on our communication and information sharing efforts, so how's that going, we haven't really done our, you know, last community pride survey, I think we did, was in the 2019, 20 timeframe, and so Dr. Mo is working on that as part of her continuous improvement efforts, and so we kind of looking at that and figuring out how can we best get some information back that can be actionable, that we can do something with, and so that'll be worked on here, I believe, reviewing this year into next year, so figuring out what that looks like. And then our third tactic here has to do with passive communication, reviewing, evaluating, and updating the district website to better organize our resources and streamline that communication for visitors, some of this is now currently happening, because some of the stuff that was on there, like I said, was more for employee audience, so that's kind of been moved to the employee hub, but now going through and figuring out, what are the pieces that people are coming to our website for? This past week, when the website was down, unfortunately, because a vendor was having some kind of issues, we heard a lot of, I can't find my lunch menus, I can't report my child's attendance, and so obviously we made sure to push out a communication to get that to families, but looking at what the pieces of the website are that are important, and what it, what are people really need, and maybe clearing out some of the stuff that doesn't need to be there. And then our second strategy in this area has to do with fostering pride through that communication that promotes Franklin Public Schools as a better place to learn, better place to work, and part of a better community. So the first tactic, continuing to build and evaluate the use of social media to foster pride, we've been getting more and more engagements through things that we share about the great things that are happening in our schools, and again, I'll share some of that with you here in a little bit, so just constantly reevaluating that and figuring out, where can we get our biggest bang for our buck when we do put a social media post out there? I shared with you last year some really in-depth level of detail about strategically posting things at certain times that get the biggest action, we still see that kind of like 5:55 AM time, when people are maybe sitting in bed looking at their phones, that we get a lot of likes on some of our posts, and so putting something out there at that time or setting a post to go up the next day at that time sometimes helps to garner that attention. And then the second strategy and the final one here, evaluate and explore creating some kind of annual school district publication, one of the things I've been looking at as a communication specialist is seeing what other districts are doing, and I see some are doing a publication once a year, kind of a nice polished magazine that includes stories from the school district, it includes data maybe from district report cards or other data that, that the district is sharing, so looking at if that's something that we wanna do, not saying we're gonna do it, but the, the point of this tactic is, let's evaluate that, let's see what, what that looks like and how it gets put together and how it gets out and where we send it to if we choose to do that, so that is one that, we're, eventually if we do it, I would think through a family survey, it would be worked in there as if people are reading it, if it's worth it, and that kind of thing, so those are the two tactics in that area, sorry, in that strategy, and I will pause there, any questions on the external stakeholder section here?
So, and is most of this digital, is that your goal, all digital, or what's your paper digital ratio you're?
No, I think it's a good mix of, of both, I mean, right now we do, I mean, a lot of it is digital, because it's quick and easy for people to access, but right now, I mean, it's some of our physical things that we're pushing out, we do the five times a year in the city newsletter, we have the one-pager that gets put in in the center of their, the full color, so that's one way that we're pushing information out to the community, not necessarily just to our parents, that's going to community members, and then this would be something that I would envision would probably be more out in the community as well.
Yeah, on that note, because when, I don't know if you were, I don't know if I misunderstood you, but you said something along the lines of, maybe we should survey our families to see if such a publication would be worthwhile, I don't know if the families would necessarily be your target audience.
Sure, right.
Might be more your people who don't have kids in school.
Right.
I think that that actually would be very valuable, there are many people, because we don't have a local newspaper, who feel very cut off from what's going on in the school, I think, and I just would like to support that publicly.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that, I didn't say that, but that, that would be the case, would be figuring out from, figuring out probably reaching, reaching our community members, not necessarily just our family members.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, one of the things, I think, in the community, there is more room for understanding of exactly what the school board does, you know, and I think we have talked about at the board level of how to enhance that understanding in the general community, because, you know, not everything can be done and not, school is not responsible for everything, this kind of, you know, so we had talked about that, and I think, you know, maybe the next time, you know, if you're having this, you know, maybe the board can come up with this more kind of, and I think we talked about somehow, just to improve that, understand exactly what, you know, and also some of the achievements which, as a board, for example, when we specifically work on something, for the budget, for example, and all that stuff, you know, you know, maybe we can work together with the board and you and somehow informing the public is that, okay, you know, means sometimes you might see an increase in your taxes, but actually that was not the part of the school board, but it was a part of, you know, something from the city, so I think improving the communication in that, you know.
Right.
When we do for five times a year, you know, when we, I, I have, I've seen that it comes, you know, in our newsletters, because as, and you said, we don't have a Franklin newspaper, you know, I think that's the mode of medium which we can utilize on informing the general population of what the school board is doing, what district is doing.
Sure.
And answering specific or maybe addressing specific, you know, areas as such to kind of improve that communication.
Yeah, to show those accomplishments, yeah, I agree.
I was gonna ask about our two-way communication community-wise.
Sure.
You talk about sending out a survey to gather some feedback, is there any way, and I haven't, you know, clicked around on the website for a while, is there anywhere like on the website, like I have a question, just like a general Franklin question that I wanna, or I have feedback, you know, for people who maybe don't wanna come to a board meeting or don't wanna send an email directly to somebody like, you know, a named person, is there any kind of way to get communication, if you're a community member or a parent, is there like a, like a default Franklin address or a form to fill out online or anything like that to start that communication versus just waiting for them to send a survey, or waiting for us to send a survey, which might happen once every couple of years?
Sure, so currently there is not a way on the website, doesn't mean there can't be a way in the future, I think we'd want to explore that and see, kind of what we were talking about earlier, when people fill something out, if they expect something to happen with it, like not have it just be, I went here, I gave a submission, and now what's really being done, but, but maybe in a way that could direct it to the right place, that was one of my goals with just setting up the, the simple communications at Franklin email address, just to have a way to point people to something, and then if I get messages at that account, I end up funneling them to, to whoever's responsible for whatever their question might be, but that could be something that we could look into.
And just, you know, if we're looking to improve our two-way communication, it seems like we should have something out there, so that people know there is a way to communicate with, with the board, or the superintendent, or the principal, or, you know.
Right, right.
Whoever.
Yeah, that's, that is, that is good feedback, anything else with this? Yeah.
Just wanted to, even if it doesn't necessarily become an explicitly stated goal, just thinking about the role of the Education Foundation as sort of a mouthpiece for some of your external communication, I know you've been.
Yep.
Meeting with them, but helping to make sure that that messaging is consistent, I just want to make sure everybody knows that that's happening and encourage you to keep doing it, and then I'm just curious, this is more as a parent.
Sure.
In your analytics of the building bulletins, do you have anything about people's read-through rate to the bottom of the building bulletin? They are long.
They are long, I would agree with that.
Easter bunny at the bottom of the?
The analytics we get, and I think, I, I share the one that's the district, let me come back to that, I'll show that when I get, and I'll explain, I'll, I'll come back to that question, but yeah, they do get long, we've been talking about, how can we make them more concise, what are the, what are the quick little blurbs we can give to people that are digestible so that they, you know, read it and move on, yeah, I'll come back to that.
I just want other, curiously, you know, we have a lot of sports going on, we have really great sports teams, but, you know, I'm not a parent at the high school, I'm not connected there, there's no newspaper, how do I follow sports?
Yeah, that's a great question, I mean, I think Mr. Heine does a great job of sharing on our Franklin High School social media accounts, so that would be the way is, is accessing there, because he does a really good job, whenever there's an accolade to share, he's posting it through the Franklin High School.
Run the right Facebook section, is that it?
Yeah, Facebook, Twitter.
Or you can go, you can do Instagram, he's, there's lots of different ways to follow it.
Yep.
We'll have a little session.
Okay.
Awesome, I'm gonna get moving, because I know this is going long, and I wanna jump into the next part.
On us.
So, so what I'm gonna do, and I'll get this to you, is take the, the strategies, the tactics we just talked through, I'll put it in a one-page executive brief, kinda like we have from the last plan, so that'll be shared with you as well, so you don't always have to flip through the multiple pages of the, of the full plan. So that was part one, what I'm gonna do next then is I usually present to the board twice, I usually do it around December, it got moved to January just for some other board items that we have in December, so around December and then May and June, so I'll come back to you in the spring, I'll share where we're at with some of these tactics and, and progress, and, and update you more then. The second part here that I'm just gonna go through very quickly are just some examples from this school year, from, just some updates and examples to, to our communication efforts in general, so this was, last year if you recall, when we, when we entered back to school, we had a reopening doors was kind of our branding and our theme, and we had a reopening doors page for all of the COVID information and, and all of that, what we found through that, and we did hear back from families from anecdotally, just through talking to secretary at the building level or whatnot, we heard a lot of feedback that it was really good to have everything in one place, that morphed into what has now become our communications hub, so in exploring what some other school districts do to kind of organize their communications in the best way possible, a lot of them do something like this, where it's one page for all communications, and so if you, if a, if a member of the community or family member is to go here, you'll usually see the latest communications on the right side, latest communications meaning things that we have directly blasted to our families, I'll usually put a copy of them there, we have all of our district newsletters here, so usually, you know, the, the building newsletters go out on Mondays, the district newsletters go out usually every other Friday, so links to those are all here, currently our, our dashboards with our statuses for, for COVID and masking is here, but it was really good to kind of put that all in one place and then point people to it for, for what they need, so that's something that came out of returning to school last year and that we found a benefit for, for our communication efforts. So that's something that came out of returning to school last year and that we found a benefit for, for our communication efforts. I mentioned the employee hub, so there's a screenshot of it there on the right. So it houses our resources. So staff have access to all different tools. So all those tools are linked up there as well as down the left side or the department pages. We have a news feed there, so anything that we push out at the district level or if we want to push something specifically to staff, we can put that into the staff update section. And then we have the right side is kind of our, our district calendar and kind of what's currently going on. So that's something that we are trying to find some creative ways to use so that we're pushing staff there. So it becomes a regular part of their flow. This past summer, as we were entering the summer and getting ready to come back to the school year, we typically don't do a lot of communication in the summer. We have summer school going on, so we do regular communications for that. But as we were deciding about if there was going to be a virtual program, as we had back to school online check-in, if there were going to be mitigation changes, leadership hires, we found a benefit to having kind of a little five-part newsletter series just scattered throughout the summer. We didn't do it on a regular basis. It wasn't like every Friday. So that was something I just kind of did because it was out of need, but we'll look at if that's something we need to continue doing into this next summer or not. So that was something that we found was helpful, was a regular way for people to expect communications from us like they do during the school year.
I would say that is significantly helpful and in terms of like keeping people engaged with, don't forget that there is school.
Right.
You know, I think, I think it's a valuable thing.
Yeah, no, that's good. That's good. That's helpful. Consistent branding for the start of the year. So last year, if you remember, we did the staggered start. And then we did it, we did a variation of the staggered start this year. So the looks that we had created for everything with our black and our gold and whatnot, tried to keep that looking the same so that people would know what to expect. So as we figured out what our staggered start days were going to be for this past fall, we went with the same look that we had last year, just again, to kind of give that repetition and make sure that people understood what to expect for their child's first day or days of school. Our district newsletter. So the district newsletter really started more as an updates from the superintendent, if you remember way back when. And so we kind of still had that theme going with it. And as we used it more and more, Dr. Miller and I talked and she said, this is really the district newsletter. Like this isn't just updates from the superintendent all the time. She will put her updates in there. She'll usually do a family message to start that off and, and update with whatever's going on for that week or that two weeks. But we kind of changed that look a little bit and we wanted to make sure we were showcasing our students. So making sure that our students' pictures were somehow featured in that banner. And then I rotate those out every, usually every month so that there's some new pictures in there. And we're really trying to make a conscious effort to have more pictures of our kids in our district newsletter as well. And in thinking about our better place to work, one thing we started this past summer, and two of them are sitting right here, was how do we showcase when we have new leadership hires or if we have leadership changes or, or promotions of somebody from assistant principal to a principal? And so I kind of designed with, similar to what we did when we did the, the billboards around the community thinking teachers last May. I really liked how that turned out with that look because we kind of have that, that curvy shield is, you know, the shield is our district logo. So I tried to incorporate that into this. And then I usually get a quote from the person about what they're excited about. And then, you know, obviously a mention of who they are and what their role is. So that's been something that I think has been working well. That same look, we've also incorporated into recognitions when we do a recognition or if we do an ad. I've been trying to just be consistent with that for this year and then maybe we'll tweak it a little for next year. So when we have recognition days or weeks, like National Bus Safety Week, or we're recognizing Native American Heritage Month, we're doing that, that similar look. So people look at it and know that it's coming from Franklin Public Schools. Our board briefs. So this actually came from an idea that Ms. Christie started, which was great on social media to just share quick bullet points from the board meetings, not the full minutes. We still put together the full minutes. We put together the full videos and get those on our websites. That takes a little while to compile, but keeping the public informed of what the board's doing. And so creating these this year, putting them out on social media as well as then also putting them in whatever the next district newsletter is just to keep the public informed. Our district and our building level newsletters, I already kind of talked about this earlier, that we, every other Friday, currently we did one last week. We're going to do one this week just because there's a lot going on that we want to keep families informed about. People have come to expect our building newsletters every Monday. And so our secretaries take care of pushing that out. And I work with them to coordinate messaging. So sometimes we get someone that has a message for a bulletin and we, and I, I'm the one that's figuring out, okay, where's the best place for this to go? And I have a shared document with the secretaries. This gets into logistics you guys probably don't care about. But then I'll park it there and they know to grab it for their next newsletter. So that's been working well just to kind of hopefully streamline the messaging. So newsletter analytics. Last year I went into a deep dive with this and this gets back to the question that Dr. Beer asked. Behind the scenes of the smart tool that we use, we can see how many views a newsletter has had. And then the little box that just appeared on the lower left tells us how long someone looked at the page. It doesn't tell us exactly a read-through all the way to the bottom like you were asking for, but that at least gives us, when I mouse over it, it tells me the numbers of how many, how many of the views were on it for less than a minute, a minute, two to five minutes. And so that is data that I do track and I kind of look at that and that tells me, okay, wait, hold on. Some of our blurbs are getting way too long and we got to pull that back a little bit. So we do try to adjust based on that. So this gives us analytics that are very helpful. It also tells us the picture on the right is telling us the clicks, the things that people click through to. And so that has been very helpful to see what are people clicking to and what kinds of things can we put in a newsletter versus maybe where else we would park it if we were just going to put it on our website. So the family and district newsletter from July of this past year, the five that were in the summer, and then through this January, this is the data for the views. So this is, each issue is listed there at the bottom. And so we send this out to 5,528 students is our total number. But then you think about that and that might, depending on family situations, they might have two parents. They might have step-parents, three parents, four parents. So you think about all of the, the distribution that's occurring for that newsletter. What we look at for a goal is usually around that 4,000 mark. And so last year when I brought the graph to you, and actually let me put that up there because that'll be a good comparison. Don't get thrown off that the 4,000, it's still 4,000. It's just the graph on the left had a really high bar that pushed the view up to 9,000 for that one. So this is 2020 on the left, 2021 on the right. And so we kind of see a similar pattern, like as school year gets started, people are really digesting this information. One thing that I think is really interesting that we looked at this year specifically, and it's a little hard to see on the right side, but we did put out a newsletter right before Thanksgiving on that Tuesday, I think it was the 23rd. And then we did one on the 22nd of December. Those were two of our lower ones because no one cares to want to read anything right now. They're going out to break. So that actually informed our decision. If you recall back when we did the district newsletter, it was basically just a happy holidays from Franklin Public Schools. Here's a bunch of great pictures of our kids from, you know, holiday time this week at school. So we didn't want to, we didn't have to go into any details about anything that was, be a lot of information or anything like that. So that's something that we'll implore going forward, I think. We won't, we'll know when to communicate based on when we know people are reading. This gets into the other metrics we can see behind the scenes is how many people opened it on the first day, which is a blue bar. How many people opened it on the second day, even though it says day one, is the red bar. And then how it trickles off the further you go. What's interesting about this is we're still getting a lot of views later into the, into the, you know, day four, day five. When you, when you look at that, I mean, the bars look small, but that's still 240 people, 271 people, so on and so forth. So that return of people possibly coming back to this as a resource is helpful for us to know because again, this is the reason we do this. We try to put all the information in one place, give it out. And then if people come back to it, or the data is showing us rather that, that people are coming back to it. So that was the September and October issues. And that was the November and December issues. Last year, we did the district newsletter weekly because we had so much going on. We wanted to keep families regularly informed. This year with it being bi-weekly, the numbers actually look very much the same when I compare them to last year. So it's a stable communication vehicle for us. That's why I went to the effort to share all that with you. Our social media pages, Facebook still gets the highest engagement. Instagram has really grown over this last year. I think people just are liking visual and want to see pictures and they are quick to hit the, hit the like or the little heart in Instagram. Twitter's good for sharing quick little news blasts and I'll put things out on Twitter that I put on Facebook and Instagram. But the engagement just really isn't there as much for us for Twitter. I think it's more Facebook and it's more Instagram where, where people are consuming that. These are the top posts. I set the, the metric marker here from September 1 through December 31st. So our top post that had the most reach and the most likes and comments and shares that you can see there was when we announced that Robinwood was the Blue Ribbon National School winner. And so that got a lot of traction, followed by Abby Martin, who we mentioned earlier, being on the Food Network as one of our high school seniors. She got a lot of traction. She beat the football team, you guys. Well, there's an asterisk there because we shared more of the football stuff on the high school account. So this is just the district.
All right.
But the, the third post is the, the football team heading off to state when we did some quick district posts about that. So overall, really good engagements. Some other ones there are, I think the fourth one was the house build that the students were doing for tech ed. I think that was homecoming parade. And then I think that was another tech ed one down below. So those were some of our top Facebook posts from just the last four or five months here. Over on Instagram, similar, Coach Lewis Brown being announced as the coach of the year was the top spot. The high school winning was the second and then Abby Martin was third. And then it got into some other social events. Our cross, down at the bottom was our cross-country teams heading off to state. Homecoming Parade was in there. So things like this that we look at to try to just see what are people engaging with and where's our pride coming from? That's, that's what that helps us with. So all that to say, the end. Now we'll leave it there. I am so sorry. We went very long on that. Any questions here at the end about any of the items that I shared with you?
Not, not a question. I mean, it went long, but there was a lot of really valuable information. And I would just say you're doing a great job. Thanks for, thanks for putting this all together so we can see it and thanks for what you're doing every day.
I like giving you guys actionable, you know, visuals and just what we're doing. So yeah, that's helpful to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thanks.
Yep.
Along with this item though, is also our own committee that we put together. And I think Anne and Angie, if you want to take us through that.
Yes, at the beginning of the year, we had talked about setting a goal to improve board communications. And so we formed an ad hoc committee. We've met twice and the last time that we met was actually just Anne and I. But we came up with some goals and the biggest ones are we want to have a means of regular bidirectional conversation in person with constituents. And we want to ensure that written communications are responded to in a timely and orderly manner. So we came up with some suggestions and so we're just looking to see if we can get some buy-in from the board and then we can move forward with implementing them. So the first is we would like to have at least two board members arrive 30 minutes early to regular meetings with the goal of having informal conversations with any attendees who show up who want to have such conversations. And we need to make clear that this won't affect the subsequent agenda. And we need then to keep track of any themes or topics so then we can share it back with the full board. I know that Debbie did say that this has been tried in the past and it wasn't particularly successful, but we thought, well, let's try it again.
We seem to have more engagement at school board meetings now than we maybe have in the last four or five years. So.
Thoughts on, thoughts on this? This would essentially be making a signup sheet and.
Would it be, you think 30 minutes are needed or something shorter or?
We could.
Adjust that if, if you thought 15 minutes.
I find that when I get here 15 minutes before I'm setting up, I'm, you know, I start to get distracted by this part of the, part of the room. So I thought that 30 minutes might be. Alan, what do you think?
Yeah, I like it.
I think that's a very good idea, kind of engaging with the constituents. But I think, you know, do we, do we need to have that announcement to the public that, you know, board members are kind of, how are you going to kind of, you know, have that two-way communication? You know, is it going to be announced to the constituents or?
Yeah, I think that with any of the things that we're doing here, we would have to announce them in the ways that we communicate out what's going on with the board in general. So we would have to ask Mr. Kafka to include that in his board briefs, probably include it in the building bulletins and the district newsletter. And then it'll just spread by word of mouth, I'm imagining, so.
And there would need to be communication. I mean, it's not a, you know, a common airing of grievances and go on for half an hour. It's not meant to be that, but it's, you know, kind of sharing ideas and having a chance to talk with the board members. And then as we track what those concerns are, we can make a plan for how are we going to address those concerns. If we're hearing a lot about, you know, I don't know.
Whatever.
Whatever the one topic is, we can kind of focus on that.
I think that's a good idea.
Mike was going to say. You were going to say something on the phone?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say, I think it's a really good idea to at least, to at least try it and have, have somebody show up early. I'm certainly happy to do it any meeting. And, you know, I, I think it's important to have those conversations, if for nothing else, than to, than to make it known that we're not oppositional, we're just your neighbors. And, you know, getting to know people and to know that we're all on the same side and we're working together.
Okay, so if there's general buy into this, I can work on making, I'll make a signup. And then I will work on sort of touching base with whoever was the person who stayed early just to hear if there were any topics and they'll just sort of track that. All right? So that'll be the next step for that. We'd like to work on closing the loop with community commenters. So for example, if you wanted a follow-up email from the board to make sure that that happens. So possibly just including on that slip of paper, just a little checkbox that says, I would like someone to follow up with me. And then we could work to, I envision having sort of a shared Google Doc where we can say, these are the people who wants to sign up to follow up, this person, this person, et cetera. Thoughts?
I have a thought on that, Dr. Beer. I think that, I, I thought it was a good idea when you, when you guys had that meeting. And Dr. Miller and I talked about that at a subsequent meeting. And we have been trying to make sure that we follow up with people, with people that speak during community comment as, as they would like it. But I, I do think if, if there was a, if there was another line saying, would you please get back to me? And, you know, I think that, I think that promotes, I think that promotes more communication. I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. We have tried to start doing that. So, you know, I think we can just kind of sort of continue doing it. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that a Google Doc is needed. I think it is, I think that's largely the role of either me as the board president or Dr. Miller as a superintendent to follow up with those people. Unless they would request that, that somebody else, that somebody else speak with them.
I mean.
But I do think it's a good idea.
That actually makes sense to me, Mike, since you're usually the one sitting there with the basket of slips of paper. You could be, you know, I would agree that it seems like your role, but I didn't want to say, Mike, do this thing, so.
That's, I was just going to say, it sounds like if you're already doing it, you can continue to do it. And we don't need to create a whole new process for it if, if it's already happening.
I think we just need to kind of inform the people who have taken the time. To be honest with you, I really appreciate the people who come, you know, out of the busy lives and come and, you know, attend the board meetings and give the input as such, you know. It's commendable kind of, you know, with the busy lives and all that stuff. So I think as a board, we must definitely at least inform them and they must, they have the right that, okay, you know, we heard you and all that stuff. And, you know, Mike as the president of the board, you know, Dr. Miller, you know, as someone is getting back to you with your comments as such and answer. I think it's a, it closes the loop and also kind of, you know, improves, you know, I think, you know, more encouragement from constituents as such.
Consider yourselves informed, regular attendees. One thing that, and again, Mike, I am not meaning this as like you're, how is this going? It's more just, we all get letters and sometimes I, I know that you respond to them, but I don't necessarily know on all of them. And so I just want to, we just want to make sure that we are sure that all letters to the board are being responded to by the, by the board. And so I don't know if we need to track that or if we just need to reaffirm what our policy or our practice is on that. I don't know. To me, I feel that, to me, if someone writes to the board, even if they get a response from staff or administration, I think that they should get a response from the board in addition, if they've taken the time to include the board in a letter. What do you think, Alan?
But when you say the board, are you saying every member of the board?
No, I'm just saying someone from the board. And so that's basically, I'm creating more work for you, Mike.
But I think he does. I mean, I, I think, I expect that he does, right? I mean, that's our norm, our expectation.
I just wanted to reaffirm that norm.
Well, I think, I think what you're saying is that although, you know, in some cases we might get something that's addressed to Dr. Miller and to the board, that would be a Dr. Miller response as well as a board response. Is that what you're saying, Dr. Beer?
Yeah, that is what I'm saying. But I, if you all disagree with me, feel free to do so.
No, I, I agree.
I disagree in some, in some respects and, and, well, I, I think that, I think that in, I think that often Dr. Miller and I would have the same, would have the same reply, which is why, which is why in those cases, it's generally, it's generally her that replies. If, if it's, if we think it's necessary for me in those cases to say, thank you for your letter and Dr. Dr. Miller, Dr. Miller will respond or Dr. Miller has responded or that sort of thing. That's fine, but I don't, I disagree in, in that I, I think that having the same response twice is, is silly.
Yeah, it would be silly to have the same, I agree with you to. Yeah, it would be silly to have the same, I agree with you to, so let's say Dr. Miller typed out a very thoughtful, you know, three paragraph response to a complicated letter. I agree, it would be silly for you or any of us to write the same thing again. But I do think that it's just good practice to say, thank you for taking the time to write. You should be hearing from Dr. Miller. Please let me know if you do not.
Well, and there are certain things that Dr. Miller is going to be far more qualified to answer than board president, but there are times when it might be more of a board issue as well. So I think, I think it might depend a little bit on the nature of the letter that we get. But I just think.
And I think in those cases, in those cases, we do talk. There is a lot of, there is a lot of communication between the board president and the superintendent. But I do agree that, I do agree that having some sort of, some sort of document to make sure that we're getting, that these people are getting a response would be, would be helpful.
Maybe sometimes it's a shared email as well. If you guys are both going to say the same thing, maybe it comes from both of you. I don't know.
That gets kind of, that makes it even more difficult to write, but.
It takes longer.
Well, I'm probably going to still continue my habit of saying, thank you for writing. You can expect to hear from one of these two people, even though it's, you know, kind of, I mean, it's not particularly informative, but it's just, I think, good, I think it's just a good manner.
It's acknowledging, it's acknowledging that you've received something and that you've read it, certainly.
I can work on trying to create a shared document though for tracking, follow up, if that's okay with the group.
So that would give us some record then from year to year?
Yeah, just so we can see, hey, did anybody ever get back to so-and-so? Okay, and then the biggie is sort of what we were talking about at our goal-setting meeting, which was about trying to have actual face-to-face meetings on a regular basis with key stakeholder groups. When we made up our suggestion, we wanted to do, we had pie in the sky that we would do this monthly. I think we kind of drew it back and said, let's just go for three in the first year out. So I would like the boards sort of okay for whoever wants to help me work on planning these to think about how, where, and who. So the who should perhaps be a conversation we have now. What would we see as our key stakeholder groups? Like, obviously, one of them would be parents. To me, another one would be non-parent, community members. I don't know. The purpose of this would literally just be to have a conversation.
Right. I think it would also be important to include our staff, you know, to hear from, directly from them what their concerns are. You said community members and parents.
So those are, what you're thinking of?
I don't know. I put on the document what we brainstormed, but I'd be interested to hear what you all think.
We've also talked with Senator Bradley and I think Representative Skoronsky about having, having maybe local, other local leaders. And I know, I know Senator Bradley is interested in circling back a little bit more and I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's more of a, a couple of us meet with him personally, but I do think, I do think those, those may be helpful. And I think maybe we've tried those in the past and it hasn't, and they haven't been particularly helpful, but maybe, maybe you, Mrs. Wackowski can tell us how those went if they did.
We did attempt some liaison relations with the city council and it obviously hasn't worked real well, but not that it can't be tried again. I like the idea of at least trying to get the format working here and maybe expand which groups we, you know, meet with.
Yeah, so I guess at this point, I'm just saying, if we were to try and get these things off the ground, would you all be willing to participate if your schedule allows?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that will be a good, of course, based on the ability of, you know, who is willing to come up and has the time.
Yeah, it wouldn't have to be every board member at every meeting.
No. Again, we would divide and conquer and communicate back what we've learned. Great, I'm excited to hear the support. And so now we could perhaps have another meeting, which we'll publish the date of, to work on how we're going to operationalize these plans. Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right, we'll make it happen.
Sounds great. Thank you, Dr. Beer.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, next agenda item is the NSBA conference discussion. Mrs. Bray, can you?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Mrs. Wackowski. So a while back, Mrs. Winkie, I'm not sure if she's still there, but she asked us if we consider those of you who comment domestic terrorists. And I think it, it was a little jarring, although it did, it did have something to do with, well, it had everything to do with the letter that the National School Board Association put out saying that possibly people who, who respond or who comment at, excuse me, at school board meetings should be possibly considered domestic terrorists. There's been a lot of blowback, as I think there should have been, for the National School Board Association and the WASB has disengaged for the time being with the National School Board Association as have about half of the other state school board associations. And so at any rate, there's a, there's a conference coming up in April for the NSBA and I don't know if there's, I don't know if there needs to be any discussion, but I don't think it's a good idea that, I don't think it's a good idea that we participate this year. And, you know, as we saw or as we'll see in the resolutions by the WASB that we'll be, that we'll be looking at, you know, there are three of them that relate to the National School Board Association and disengaging with them. So at any rate, I did, I did look into possibly getting out of our, getting out of our agreement or membership with the National School Board Association and what that would entail and it is a sunk cost for this year. So there's nothing, there's nothing that we could do about that if we wanted to. And I think that's something we should, we should certainly not decide now. We decide that later in the, later in the year in May or, in May or June when those would come due. The other thing is there's, there's only one membership for the NSBA and it is, it is based on the, it's based on your enrollment. So I think our, I think our membership in the NSBA costs a district around $7,000 this year. At any rate, I don't know if there's any discussion or how anybody else feels, but I don't think we should go to the conferences this year.
I mean, on the issue of the conference this year, I think it's hard to justify travel, maybe given the COVID situation as well, and, you know, that's fine. I think it would be, I think it would be rather extreme to completely cut off ties with an organization based on one, one statement like that. I, whether or not we agree with the statement of, you know, and how it was done or, you know, whatever, you know, it seems like all the other valuable resources that we do receive from the NSBA would maybe justify keeping that, but we could certainly look into that when it comes due, like you said, in May or June.
Yeah, that'll be the question for me is what is the value of our membership? For me, the obvious value of the WASB has proven itself on more than one occasion already. I'm less clear, other than the briefs we get, it seems like every other morning from the NSBA, what exactly the value to us as a board is, but I will wait, but that's what I want to hear.
I would like to look into that and see exactly what they do, but I'm not willing to just, you know, based on one person saying one thing on one day, say we're done with an organization completely. I think there are a lot of times in life where you.
I don't disagree. I agree with you, Anne. I don't think that we should, I, I think we should sort of go as the, I think we should sort of go as the WASB has gone and, and sort of take their lead and see what, they've hired a new director and, and hopefully they're, hopefully they're moving forward. And there's certainly no decision to be made today at an hearing. But, you know, I do think that the convention is something to not spend, not spend our money on this year.
Was anyone planning, thinking about going?
No, not anymore.
No, so.
So we're good.
All good.
No.
All right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, but I don't think so anymore.
All right, so.
So that can be all we say about that. I don't think it's, I think we're sort of in consensus.
All right, so we'll move on to the next item, which is the review and discussion of WASB-proposed resolutions, of which three of them are connected to this issue and that might inform us also going forward.
Yeah, so we all received copies of the resolutions that are being proposed to the WASB at next week's meeting. Several of these were submitted by school boards and several were generated by the WASB internally. So I get this as, I guess at this point, as your, what am I, delegate? I would like to know if you have any thoughts. I guess basically, do you not support any of these resolutions or would you like to see some change to them prior to supporting them? To me, they all looked pretty straightforward. The ones in relation to the NSBA had to do with changing the language in the bylaws to say the WASB, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, has to have membership with some national organizations rather than prescribing that it has to be the National Association of School Boards. And then so three of the resolutions are just sort of cleaning up language to allow for that to be the case.
I didn't object to any of, I neither did.
I support all, I support all the resolutions as such.
Yep, pretty generic.
I didn't under, I didn't like 22-7, the curriculum and professional training on Asian-American and Pacific Islanders.
What did you not like about it?
Okay, I'm Polish. We don't have any special studies for Poland. Once you're here in the United States, you're an American citizen. You're not, you should think of yourself as an American. And I think we're spending too much time trying to segregate us. I have no problem with learning about what they're doing, but I don't know that we need a resolution to do that.
Well, it looks like what this resolution.
I also think that's.
Go ahead, Mike, sorry.
I'm sorry. I also feel like that, that resolution number seven is sort of a mandate without a, without any budget to back it up. You know, there's, there frequently seems to be these type of things that, for instance, cursive writing seems to be one of those things where, oh, let's do cursive writing. This could cost, this could cost $500,000 with cursive writing into your school and we want you to do it, so do it. And it may not make sense. It takes away local control. I don't like, I don't like the idea of mandating something without, mandating you do something without telling me how I can take one.
Well, this actually doesn't. It actually just asks for the state public, Department of Public Instruction to develop a curriculum on that area. So if districts don't currently have adequate teaching on that particular subject area in their history curriculum, they would have curricula available to them to expand it. I know when I was in high school, we didn't, we didn't learn necessarily a great deal in our general history class about the history of how that part of the world influenced the development of the United States. And so I think that especially in light of the recent immigration trends to this state, it's a reasonable thing to look to expanding our curriculum to include that population. I don't have a problem with that.
I didn't have a problem with that. I feel like anytime you can learn more about the people who are around you, that leads to greater understanding and, you know, openness and relationship building and things like that. So I didn't see a problem with it. I hadn't, I hadn't seen it from that perspective of an unfunded, unfunded mandate. I think it's more so just kind of making the, making, giving, giving some direction to how, you know, how we can help students learn more about.
I think it's just providing tools rather than mandating. It's not a mandate. It's providing tools to the schools to kind of, you know, so I think, you know, just, you know, providing a tool to the. Again, the recommendation of the WASB, of course, you know, it's not that big. It's going to be done and it's just providing tool and then the school districts can, you know, utilize that tool or not. It's just an educational tool, just like, you know, any tool which you design. So I think a better understanding of the people around us than said, I think.
But Mike, I'll definitely make sure when I'm in that session that I'm attending to whether, if this becomes a mandate that it be taught, that, you know, appropriate funding has to be tied to it, but that's not how I read it.
But when we teach this, what are we not going to teach? The hours, the minutes, whatever you take to put into this, what are we going to shave off? We going to stop studying World War I, World War II, something from history? Our time is precious and we should be using it. And I don't know that this buys that much for us because you've got to cut something out when you're going to do this.
So who proposed this?
That'll be an interesting question to ask when it comes to our local curriculum review, is if our local curriculum chooses to incorporate this, if it is in fact developed, what is in fact being lost?
I could see an extra credit study that you could ask the kids to do, and what do you want to do? And use this as an example of something that you could do extra study on. Some kids may find it really interesting.
So perhaps.
Or even a small group to put together something. You, you get more information to the kids, but I just don't know that this is that important.
So who proposed it though? The status?
This was proposed, this actually I think came from a school board, didn't it?
They all come from school boards. They used to say.
Some of them are internally created. No, this was.
They used to say what. This is the WASB recommending.
This is the WASB internally. And they did it in response to state legislation recently. There were days of remembrance and a heritage month established, so. What I'm hearing is there is a consensus for support of this, but with the added caveat that it not become mandated at a local level or become mandated without funding at a local level. Do you think that, I think that that accurately reflects our conversation.
I would agree.
Do you agree?
I think that, I think that, I think you're right about that, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so you're set?
I'm set.
All right. Item number 11, school board liaison reports. First one is personal policy, policy number 7310, competitive bidding and negotiated pricing. Dr. Khan and Mr. Nolan.
So this policy was last devised in 2013. It's a policy when we have any purchase of good or services, how it's posted and how it is kind of given to the vendors selected. The language added was kind of, instead of the Director of Business, it was Assistant Supreme of Business Operation. And because the vendors are not here, and that's the reason, that language of publicly read aloud was removed. So I feel this is just a minor tweak of the language and not a change in policy as such. So if everybody had a chance to read this policy, I'd like for a motion to approve this revision.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion approved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, of course.
Yes, I do as well. Go ahead, Anne.
Item C, negotiated pricing, we added after competitors' pricing, value added. That is such a nebulous term. It doesn't say anything. And I could see where someone would go, well, you, we're going to pay a lot more for this, but to have work done on the shrubbery and grass around here. but to have work done on the shrubbery and grass around here, and we're going to pay it to this company because they have an arborist working for them and the other ones don't, and that's such a great value added. May not be worth a darn, but somebody might try to sell it as, as value added. It's, I don't like a term like value added. It's, it's just, it's a glittering generality, as one of my professors used to say it, and I don't think it says anything. And the other thing I had was, who's our Assistant Superintendent of Business and, and Operations now?
That would be me, Jim.
I thought you were Director of Business Services.
That's the old days.
I owe it.
Is there a reason why?
I do think that.
Go ahead.
I do think, I, I, and may, I think there is a, the change to Mr. Mills' job title. I think we're changing a lot of other things to the designee of the, of the superintendent or the designee of the district administrator. If we're not going to change this for another eight years, I, I doubt that Mr. Mills will be here anymore in eight years. And the, the next person may not have that title. Is that, is that something we want to, we want to make a general title?
I think, you know, instead of Director of Business Services, it's Assistant Superintendent. So if you're going, you know, instead of having this director, director, you know, kind of if you're going in the direction of having Assistant Superintendent of Business, Assistant Superintendent of, you know, difference. I think, you know, just the role doesn't change. It's just the title.
Is the title uniquely applied to you, Mr. Mills, or do you think it's going to stay with the position?
I believe it'll stay with the position. And we have used titles in many of the other policies. You'll find them in there. I think this one uniquely goes with my position, rather than a superintendent designee or something like that.
I, I agree. I just didn't know if, if the next, the next person would have, would have the same title.
Yes.
And if it's, I mean, I agree that, I agree that this is you or the next person. I just, that, that's my question about it. Otherwise, I'm fine with it.
Can you talk a little bit about Mr. Alexandrovich's concern about the term "value added"? I don't have a view on this, so I need to be educated.
I, I can see what you're saying there with "value added." The reason I put it in there is that it's not always all about price. There are vendors that do have better, better skills than others, a better product than others, and it, it might not be just pricing. So that's really what I was going for there. Not that it was a shiny glittery thing that distracted us from the pricing, but that, all things being equal, there are some firms that offer better services than others.
Are you okay with that, Anne?
And I think, you know, we, we value, and I think as a board, we always value, you know, everything, am I right? Education means, you know, if you, if you say education, education doesn't have a price, you know? So value added, as Jim is stating, is that it's just better service. It might be the same product, but if that, you know, vendor is able to provide a better service, you know, then it is, and charging a little bit of more money, then it's adding value to that. And that will enhance the education of the kids.
I mean, this is basically say, a way to say, we're not always going to have to just go with the lowest price if, if there are other factors to take into consideration, correct?
Correct.
Is there another way to say it that's less?
I like what you said with service. Competitive pricing, service, or known market factors.
Okay.
All right, I will amend my initial motion to strike "value added" and replace it with the phrase "service."
Second. Okay. I have a question also, though, on the, the first paragraph talks about the level of $20,000 when you have to be involved. This has been a while since we reviewed this. Is that amount still appropriate, or would you lower or increase that?
I, I think I would leave it the same. I did look further into this, since I emailed you this afternoon. And this statement was suggested highly by our auditor to put in the last time we changed this, because it relates to federal grants and statements we have to have in order to comply with the federal grant rules. So they requested last time we did this to put this statement in, which I had not remembered. So I, I think we would just leave it.
The $20,000 is appropriate?
Yes.
Okay.
Where's the $20,000 on here? I missed it.
First paragraph, last sentence in the first.
Just under the green Assistant Superintendent.
Okay, I just blew by it. Thank you.
So any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item is personnel policy number 6440, homebound instruction. Dr. Khan and Ms. Cody.
So homebound instructions, you know, is a policy where any student, if they have a specific physical, or, you know, other situation, then they can get a letter from their provider to get instructions for the school for 30 calendar days. That was last reviewed in 2000. And right now, instead of, the word was first of all added was K5 to 12th, because by Wisconsin statute, we are not required to give homebound instructions to 4K, you know? And then there, there was a word added, licensed physician, you know, just to kind of have. And then also, instead of expected time, the date of return, because time is, you say, you're going to return on Monday, not at 7:55 PM, you know, so that's what, so some of the language. And then if you scroll down, the wording was added to about, it's not added, it's replacement of the, who's responsible to create the homebound instructions plan, who coordinates that, and what are the responsibilities of the school district, what is the responsibility of this student as such, and so far. So it's, again, we're changing of the language, you know, but the essence of the policy remains the same. Did every, I'm sure everybody got a chance to read it. Questions?
Let's do the motion first. Can we get a motion on the floor?
Sure. Motion to approve this as presented.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and seconded. Discussion? Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item is board liaison reports. Do we have any board liaison reports? I will say that SWSA did meet today, Thursday, and I won't say too much. I'll share the notes. And it will be covered in a future agenda item also. We're going to do a more formal update, so that's all I will say. Next item then is school and community engagement reports. Do we have any of those?
Anne, do you want to remind us to go to the play on Friday?
I can remind you to go to the play on Friday. The middle school drama club play is Friday, 7 o'clock. You can attend from home by getting a live stream ticket, or you can come to the Sabre Center. Our middle school students have been working for the last couple of months on this play, and it is called Night at the Wax Museum. And it is sort of a, kind of a, it's a comedy, what happens when wax museum comes alive, so I'd encourage you to come.
It's going to be virtual.
It's virtual or in person. You can get your tickets to go to the Sabre Center website, and you can buy a ticket either virtually or to buy a ticket to come. Come to the box office Friday night. I'll help you out.
Awesome. I did, I think you were there also, Anne, attended the O'Brien Home Building Open House.
Yeah.
Was that since our last meeting? Was that before, was that between?
Yeah, maybe it has been.
Yeah.
That was also very interesting. They do a great job, the builders, in working with those kids, so.
Yes. We were able to be in the, the house that the students of the Construction 2 class are building. They invited the community and parents and things to come and see the house. They call it their pre-drywall event. So it's all plumbed and wired and ready for the drywall to go up, and that was, it was very cold. They were going to be doing insulation next, so it was very cold. I, actually, I, while they were doing a little presentation, there was a student standing next to me. And so when the presentation was over, I turned to him and I said, you know, is there something that you just really enjoyed working on? And his face lit up. He's like, this was so cool. I did the wiring. Okay. And now see how this laid over here? And he gave me the, kind of this whole tour about the wiring. It was just really neat to see the connections that the kids made and to see those opportunities that they have at that. So I'm excited to go back and see the house at the very end, when it's all put together and finished. Thanks for reminding me, Lynn. I thought that was since our.
You know, the parents are there with their kids. It's, it is a, it was great event. And like I said, the builders, they really know how to draw them in and connect them to the, you know, building is a, it's part of the economy and how it influences everything. They really tie it together well. I was impressed. So with that, we'll go to our next item on the agenda, which is closed session. I'll need a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851C to discuss employment, promotion, compensation, and performance variation data for an administrator contract.
So moved.
Second.
I think we do need a roll call on closed session.
All right. Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mr. Spray?
Aye.
Sorry, Mrs. Wackowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Seperski?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Also, I need to say that Mr. Spray could not participate in the closed session, so he will be leaving us. Do I hit a button, Jim, or?
Bye, Mike.
Bye.
Bye. Does anybody want a break before we?
No.
Item number 13, school board meeting debriefing. Any comments from school board members? Do not hear any. So moving on to 14, future agenda items. We have Pleasant View Elementary School presentation, the 2122 instructional learning program, COVID semester report, next meeting, open enrollment seats, SWSA updates, friends of Franklin recognition, 2021 financial audit, future facilities planning and at works status update. Item number 15, adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn approved and, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:07.